Frost and everything. And just the water that poured on in there during the fire sunk down.
Yeah.
They couldn't take down the cap. So they just put a temporary cap over here in the middle of all that junk. And the guys with the scraper knocked it right off the cutting. I come out of there from the library and I could hear this hissing. And I went over and it was leaking out there. Yeah. And if it, well, like I said, those, uh, those Bobcats. If, uh, and this was a beast. If they inhale that gas, they explode.
I'm trying to do it.
It was, uh, a little mad. I remember two happy people using up this wall in my heels.
That wouldn't be a bad thing. I'd like to knock this wall down.
I think we enjoyed our movie last night.
I knocked the wall down.
It's pretty funny.
We could start there.
We got way out of there, I was thinking.
We own the alleyway.
What's kidding?
So. Well, that's what the internet guys were gonna do. They're gonna, they're gonna attach it right off of this door. So half of it could be our store, the extra store. And then half would have been where their equipment was, yeah.
Yeah, my point is, if they got a 14L line out there, it'd take a day or two. I think it's a great idea, but I'd like to see it work somewhere first so that we can justify it more. I see you saw my ear sprinkled in, Aaron.
Yes. That was good.
You had to go back to Easterville, but I'll be back.
Oh. Easterville is like what Easter is?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was a town. I was like.
No.
Because I mean, someone in Easterville had an Easter before, so they were.
Nope.
I don't know where I found it last time.
Putting that thing on today gave me a reminder to brush my teeth. If all that ever stayed in there.
Oh, yeah. Biotique.
Huh?
Biotique. Mouthwash.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Yeah.
Three and a half weeks of working this thing. I'm on my third time. I walked into the library, I checked after my last try, and she was going.
Let's call this meeting.
I said, "Don't be mad." I said, "Is it Russia?"
I'd like to call the Mitchville Public Library Board of Trustees regular meeting to order Monday, March 28th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call. Toby.
Butler.
Huska.
Allison. Allison Preston is Ellen Heather. We need to approve the agenda. I motion to approve the Monday, March 28th agenda.
I second that.
And I would like to take a moment just to apologize to Ellen. Somehow I missed her in sending out the final agenda and it was not intentional in any manner, shape, or form. And I apologize for that. And I want to publicly thank Nick for catching it. Public audience. Here's who's getting on. Tammy, do you have anything?
Um, only one comment on the budget amendment for our current year. I am working on it. If there's anything that you have not already spent that would be outside of your budget, like you're planning on using your savings for it or a grant that you haven't already expensed it yet, I would need to know that so I can add that to your budget.
So would the vet include all the deferred revenue then? From donations and all of that?
If you're gonna spend any money that you haven't already spent out of funds that weren't budgeted for, yes.
Okay.
So say you got a five.
We're talking about Ellen.
Say you've got a $5,000 grant this year and you've only spent $2,000 and you're gonna spend $3,000 before July 1st. I need to know that so I can add that $3,000 in and make sure that you're covered budget-wise.
Okay. So any money that we have on hand that we are going to spend before the end of the fiscal year needs to be listed for you.
Any money that's not in your budget.
That's not in the budget, right.
Right. Because I, I'm going with, you know, what's in your current budget.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Brad, I don't see Brad.
Brad's on call tonight. He wasn't.
Okay. Okay. Did everybody get a chance to read the February 8th minutes and the February 28th minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve the library minutes from February 8th and February 28th.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'm opposed. Motion passed. Okay. Next on the agenda is the city financial. Does everybody have a chance to look through it? Do they have any questions?
No.
No.
I'll just take note that that $20 is in parenthesis. We talked about that last month. Um, it was that credit source and it should have been under merchandise. So she deducted it from last month's and added it to the merchandise in February. That's why we came up with that $96 amount. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the city financials.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Monthly bills. Do they have any questions? No questions?
No.
Do they have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the March library bills.
For $3,360.35.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Library statistics. Hey, Ellen?
Hmm?
I didn't understand this one. I don't know if it just screwed up in the.
I don't know if they did. I seen that too. I love the message from her, but I don't know.
I mean, they, it's never been like that, so I didn't know.
One person's there every hour, all day, every day. It's probably Jerry.
No, it's outside.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, it's the internet.
Yeah, I love your message.
That probably wouldn't surprise me if somebody was out there. For example, the apartment's next to a beach. I use.
But it's never looked like this.
Yeah, well, I don't.
Ever, ever, ever. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
No.
Do you have a motion to approve the library statistics?
I make a motion to approve the library statistics.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Director's report. Does everybody have a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Did you get a chance to get ahold of Doerrson? Start coming tomorrow.
And the, and the, um, the roof is on warranty still.
Oh.
Under them. Yeah, so if they redo it again, then it'll be on warranty again for like 16 years or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It took us a long time to get that roof on there and I thought, oh, that was, that was a hard period of time. We didn't have, we didn't have the money and the city didn't have money to put that roof on. And we, it ended up costing us a lot because we were getting damage inside the library and we don't want to go through that again. I'm glad they're coming out to look. And we will be having summer school. You will?
Definitely.
They'll figure it out tomorrow and they'll let you know. Just kind of an FYI, I was out at the, at Thomas Mitchell Park and the little library. Yeah. And I don't know if it's because of the weather changing and it being moist or drier or whatever, but the little latch isn't shutting quite right. And so it's not shutting completely, so some of those books are getting damp. So I pulled a couple of books out of there because they were, you know, all ripply. You know how they get when they get wet? The edges are all ripply. So I don't know if we need a different kind of a lock, maybe just one that you turn down, you know what I mean? I, I don't know what the answer is, but it wasn't, it wasn't pulling up tight. But it sure looked nice.
Where is it at at the park?
Done with the campgrounds.
By the fences.
I'll also note that if you go out there to camp, it's, everything's 100% online or serverable.
Yeah. Do they have any other questions or comments or anything?
Um, on the generator, I spoke with my boss today. We're waiting to get back from Mid-American. Uh, Dom there has not gotten back to us. It has to go through Mid-American's engineering to update the new meter. So as soon as they get that back approved through Mid-American, then we can send off the money to get the new meter.
Are you talking briefly to me? I didn't know we needed a new meter.
Have to put in a new two-pound meter for the high gaster for the generator.
Okay.
And Premier is going to cover the cost of that and we'll add it to the final bill.
Okay. I did have one question. Well, I guess I've got a couple of questions. On the calendar, it says this D and D.
Yeah.
On Saturdays is online. What is that?
It's done through the dragon that Cordell does a, um, work game online.
So we're doing it on Saturdays, so how come we're doing it after hours or?
That's the only time that.
Is that the only time they do it?
Pretty much.
Okay.
I think there's like five or six people do it.
Okay. It's almost done. It's almost done? I was gonna say, my only suggestion would have been somewhere around here to write what that was because people are getting this and they don't, they don't know what it is.
Anyways, do like.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so do we have a motion? I motion to approve the director's report.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Ellen, I've got a question about the calendar.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't give you a chance to.
Two Fridays?
Yeah. So we do have two Fridays in a week?
Did it, did it print on there like that?
Yeah, it did. And it's, it's also 2022. And the library board meeting is at 6:30, not 7:00.
There's two calendars. I probably need to open the draft one.
Yeah.
The draft one.
I just want to know if they got a three-day weekend now every week. Unless there's two Fridays.
Yeah. You, you do, you will, you'll get it.
Hey, and just one other suggestion is, I don't know if you thought about it or not, but do like this center panel. Do that with all the library news stuff and then over here maybe say community news and put all the stuff that's the community stuff so we've got kind of the separation between what's actually library programs and what's other people's programs. Just good for thought. Okay, so we had a first and a second, but I don't think, um, I asked if all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Financial reports. I, yeah. I put together, just for convenience, I'll pass those over to Ellen. I put together a form of.
Did you?
Did I send it to you?
You did.
Okay, I did. Did that make sense? Did anybody have any changes to it?
Joan, did you get my email about that?
Yeah, you said you can't get stuff that I'm sending you. It's.
If you send it, uh, uh, when you send it as a public docs, that won't open.
So I have to put everything into a PDF?
Yes.
Okay. I just push download and then where?
I'm.
I'm not sure.
I can't, I can't open it on my phone.
Okay. Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions on the financial report? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the financial reports.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Bi law update. Did any of you guys work on it?
I have not. I've got to get with you on that to give the updates that we need to get.
Okay, start, start with your, one in your handbook.
Okay.
Should be bi law in your handbook.
Okay.
Start with that and go through it and make any, anything that you note makes, that you think should be changed. And once we've got that done, who else on that one? I gotta look. Merle's, he's coming off of it. So.
Who's coming off of it?
Nick.
Okay.
Um, so kind of look it over and then, then we can get together and talk about it.
Okay.
I don't think it'll take us that long to do it.
No.
So.
Do we need to post someone else on there to replace Merle?
We don't, we don't have to. We can. If we've got it done before this new person comes on. Nick, um, indicated, uh, right before the meeting that he, they, maybe I shouldn't be talking about it.
Oh, you can. And I decided to do, I'm gonna submit for the next agenda for the appointment to fill the last library board position. So that person, if you guys haven't finished, should probably fill in for that bi law committee. I just think it's more appropriate to be a board member than me.
Okay.
So do we hold off on that?
Well, I think we can go back. I mean, she's worked for years. Every year she updates and just another set of highs would be great.
Okay.
On everything, just, just proofreading and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, we find stuff that we've got little errors in all the time and the more eyes you have on something, the better it works, so.
I'll get with you after the meeting.
Okay. Then the community library survey. I sent that out. Did everybody get that? I dropped it in your.
Yes.
Yeah.
Door. Did anybody have changes to it?
Oh. I didn't know that just a couple of years ago we had done a community survey. So with that in mind.
Now who, are you saying who's we?
The library sent out a community survey just a couple of years ago.
Uh huh.
So if we've sent one out recently, I guess I don't see why we're gonna send out another one for a community survey and no one's gonna want to do a survey that's gonna be four pages long and 70 questions.
I know, but people seem to want to know the answers to these questions and that's why we decided to do another one.
There's a lot of these questions that are.
Let me, let me, can I explain to you how I came up with these questions first off?
Yeah.
Just for background information. Tammy sent me, what, four surveys, I think it was.
The other cities had done, yes.
Yes, the other libraries had done. And I went through all of them and tried to find a way to incorporate most of the stuff that made sense to our library. And a lot of them obviously were duplicate questions. And so, I didn't put them in here a little bit of times. I just tried to fit it so it made sense to our library. So that's how the basics of this questionnaire came from. Just, that's just the background information.
I just, I know if I got a flyer in the mail about doing a survey that saw 70 questions, I'd toss it right in the trash. I don't even think twice about it. We're gonna lose community interest on something that's that long. If we do like a page, page and a half, I can understand that. But four pages and 70 questions, no one's gonna take the time to do that.
And it can be done as an online option too.
Yeah, yes.
It's, it's not like they have to do a lot of writing. It's simply go through and circle. And it could be done pretty quickly. Did, did you try and go through it and do it?
I, I went through it.
See what it would take to do it?
And some of, some of the answers on here, like if you've not visited the library, one of the options was, I don't feel welcome or I don't like the atmosphere. To me, that, that's the meaning to, to the library.
Well, it was on the other surveys. I mean, they wanted to know why people don't go and.
And I just.
It was up in the surveys.
I think there's other options, you know, other ways that we can add to this to make it, you know, be more, more of a positive. You know, always leave an option for, you know.
I tried to start with the positives first. I mean, if you'll note, I tried to start with the good stuff first and then work our way down, but, I mean, that's, I mean, I appreciate your input.
I really do. I truly do.
So we have to decide what we want to do. I think we could come up with something that's a little bit more simplified, but this is a lot. It is a lot.
As a board member, if this was, if this was presented to me to vote on, there'd be no way that, that I would want my name attached to this.
Okay, can you go through it then for me? Can everybody go through it for us and scratch the ones that you don't think we need to ask?
Absolutely.
And why we don't?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then we can go back, like I said, this was the second draft. And then we can go, if we have to go to four drafts of it. I, I mean, I don't care how long it takes us to get where we want to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to just simplify and cut down some of the questions. I know the public doesn't know, but we're with programs like cooking, baking, and camping, campfire cooking.
Well, that's a, it's a question. Would they like something like that?
Well, they don't, we don't have a stove over there at the library, but they don't know that.
Well, not all cooking's gotta be done on a stove.
If you're going to have these programs available, you should at least have the equipment to do that.
Well, it, it, it's, it's a question.
I understand. It's a question, Joan, but this is ridiculously long. And if you make it more of a Reader's Digest version, people might want to answer it a lot faster.
Let's work on it.
The board would work on it.
I know you guys have done a grill thing before.
We'd go back to it.
Haven't you?
Just, I mean.
Oh, I thought she was.
Taking the context of what.
Okay.
I have to.
What, what we're trying to find out.
Yep.
They, the community wants this though. We've already heard that, so.
Yeah.
Let's work on it and condense it and.
Absolutely.
Go from there. Okay. So by the next meeting, can everybody come back? And you can send it to me. The more you get to me ahead of time, the more I can go through it and revise it and we get more stuff done ahead of time so we're not doing so much during the board meeting.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have any update on the can of bottle collections or is that something we don't need to put on the agenda anymore? It's going well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We're just waiting on what the legislature is gonna do.
Okay.
They might just end it.
It didn't, well, not, from what I read, it didn't sound like it, but you don't ever know what they're gonna do.
You never know what they're gonna do.
Okay. Ellen, did you bring your evaluation?
Bring it, thanks.
Okay, can you get that out to us, please? Okay. And then Jerry and Ryan, did you guys watch that webinar?
Yes, I did.
Did, was there any, do you have any questions? What did you learn that was something maybe you didn't know or you're bad at?
A lot of it's pretty much what we've already been doing.
Okay. And let's see. How does the end, uh, oh, I skipped right past the media. Yeah, I keep trying to do that, don't I? Okay, so we missed me somehow. We didn't take a vote on the press deposition last time.
Took a vote on it. We never made a motion.
We never made, we didn't make a motion. We didn't. Okay.
So I meant, so I suggested you as the chair the last time, but I never made a motion.
So you've changed your mind? You want it?
No.
Okay, okay.
No.
Okay, so are you making a motion now?
I make a motion to elect Joan as chair and president of the board trustees.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we got it done. Um, the other thing, I don't, did I send out the other statement to folks? I don't know if I did or not.
I don't believe I got it.
Okay. This is something that's in the, and it was part of one of the webinars that I was watching. Have you got it? Let me see the copy. Yes, okay. And I know I gave Nick one. I don't, did you get one, Ellen? Yeah. And it's something that I really like us as a board to, um, in the state handbook, it's on page 94 of the state handbook. And I would like us to adopt this and put it in our handbook. So take it home with you, read it. And, um, my hope is that we adopt it and that when somebody new is put on the board, that they also, that can be part of that.
The city already has an epic statement that every board member should be signing.
We've never signed anything. None of us ever have. Yeah.
Oh, I'll make sure you get a copy of that one as well.
Yeah, council changed it two years ago to include board members as opposed to just council.
I know. Okay. All right. So. This is just a little more specific to libraries, which I think is, is probably a good thing, so look it over. So look it over and then we can bring it up for the next board meeting. Education. What do you guys want for your next education piece? Do you want to do another webinar? Do you want Mary Ann Maury to come out and sit with us? What's your preference? And if they're.
Do another webinar.
Another webinar? Is there a subject that you would like to address? Do, do you want to address? Um, trying to think which are some of the ones that I've been watching. Is there anything that trips your trigger? Let me do, do a little homework on and come up with for us? Okay, you want me to send you a list?
Something that kind of pertains to what?
Or just pick one for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if you guys see one, let us know.
I like the webinars because we can do them on our own time.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, director's comments.
Nothing to do about the work thing that's not in, that's the only update.
Okay. Trustees. I got that on there twice. Nobody? Um, Nick said something to me this evening when I walked in. And I appreciated him saying it. And it was because of the conversation I had with him about catching that, not getting that agenda sent to Ellen. And he said, and I want everybody to think about this just a little bit, it's a simple, simple thing. That everybody should be looking out for each other, not trying to catch each other. And I want us to all keep that in mind. And with that, the point is, if we catch something and we tell somebody that something's not right, we're doing it to help, we're not doing it just to catch somebody. So it's just a little reminder and when Nick said it to me, I thought, yeah, I think we all need to think about that a little bit more. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it is 6:58. Meeting adjourned.